Thank you, Ashley. All right, welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm Andrea Keen, Chair of the Wayzetta School Board, and I would like to call to order the regular meeting for Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education for May 11th, 2020. On Friday, March 13th, Governor Walz issued Executive Order 20-01, which declared a peacetime state of emergency pursuant to his powers under the Minnesota statutes in Chapter 12, Emergency Management. This allows school boards to meet by conference call or other electronic means under Minnesota Statute 13D.021. So before we begin, I'll go through a couple of Zoom meeting protocol reminders. First of all, please identify yourself when speaking. If you have any background noise at your house, please mute your microphone while listening. Please do not make use of the chat feature as this is a public recorded meeting. All votes will be cast as roll call votes. And finally, in an attempt to ensure that all voices are heard, each board member will be called upon in the discussion before a vote. Feel free to pass if you don't have a question or a comment. Okay, let's get started. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Benita Lucky here. Cheryl Pozing here. C N Falconer here. Chris McCullough here. Linda Cohen here. Sarah Johansson here. Chase Anderson here. Andrea Keen here.
Thank you. First on our agenda this evening is the approval of the Agenda and the Consent Agenda items. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the items will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. Consent agenda items are contained in your board materials. Could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Cheryl Pozing, move.
C N Falconer, second.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cheryl Pozing, yes. C N Falconer, yes. Chris McCullough, yes. Linda Cohen, yes. Sarah Johansson, yes. Benita Lucky, yes. Andrea Keen.
Yes, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, we have our favorite part of the meeting, recognitions. So at this point, I will turn it over to Superintendent Anderson.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board and all of those in attendance this evening. My name is Chase Anderson. I'm Superintendent for the school district. And at our school board meetings, it's always my honor to convene the recognitions portion of the meeting. And we have a number of those this evening. And I'm going to start out, as we always do, with our first recognition, announcing the names of those individuals who have announced their intent to retire since the last board meeting. And we have two this evening. The first is Thane Frye, custodian at Kimberly Lane, 35 years in the school district, and Linda Jensen, paraprofessional, Sunset Hill, 14 years. So we congratulate them and thank them for their many contributions. And if you wish to offer at least a visual round of applause for those retiring, feel free to do so at this time. Thank you. And we thank those two individuals for their many contributions. Our next recognition this evening is for the 2020 Wayzetta Inclusive Education Excellence Award. And I would like Nate Mathias to give a wave so everybody can see him in attendance of our Zoom board meeting this evening. And I'd like to share a little bit on behalf of Nate in regard to this award. And Nate will give you an opportunity to share a few thoughts if you'd like to after I read the script. I share the following. Congratulations to Nathan Mathias, home base and Bright Start instructor at Birchview Elementary School and recipient of the 2020 Wayzetta Inclusive Education Excellence Award, sponsored by the Wayzetta Special Education Advisory Council. Nate works tirelessly to encourage friendship and inclusion for all students, wrote Kelly Heidelberger. He loves to celebrate students' successes as well as refine practices around mistakes. Eric Creashe shared, Nate has created a culture that encourages learning for all of his students. The award was established to recognize outstanding school staff who work to ensure students with disabilities have the opportunity for an inclusive education in the Wayzetta Public Schools. Nate, we congratulate you. And at this time, feel free to share a few thoughts if you'd like to.
All right. Thanks for recognizing me, I think. And usually, my day is filled with 20-some kids, young four- and five-year-olds running around. And I'm much more nervous to speak to you all than to have all those kids running around. What I hear from parents isn't always the case. They'd much rather not be in my shoes with all the kids running around. But I do just want to thank the Wayzetta Special Education Advisory Council for recognizing the needs of kids in our district and making sure inclusion is really important. It's something we value in Wayzetta. Just thank district leadership for their vision and how early childhood is valued in our district. And it really shows that the families and the staff, we feel really valued and appreciate all you do to support the work we do. The staff of Birchview, I'm fairly new to Birchview, and the staff there have just been so welcoming, provide so much support for all of us to do what we do best and to help each other out. And then the home base and Bright Start staff I work with daily. If it wasn't for them stepping in and being really collaborative, it would be really hard to reach every kid in all the ways we need to. And then really, lastly and finally, and the most important is the kids and the families. Once you get to know the kids and you sit down and meet the families, it's really hard to not be totally invested in them and giving them the best opportunities that you can and just in all yourself into the job. So thanks to all of you for the work you do and making everything possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Nate. And again, congratulations to all your teammates who have worked in tandem with you. We give you our highest congratulations and thank you for your excellent work. A round of applause for Nate and his team. It's always a little unusual doing recognitions on Zoom, although we're getting kind of used to this method. But we really appreciate all that you've done and congratulate you for the Spine Award. Our next recognition this evening is for our Employee of the Month, and that is Kate Hammerow from Kimberly Lane Elementary. Excuse me, Kate, where's Kate? I know I spotted her earlier. She must be on my other page or somewhere. Well, Kate, congratulations. And I would like to share the following that was written on your behalf. And then we'll give you an opportunity to share a little bit following my comments. Kate Hammerow consistently goes above and beyond as Kimberly Lane Elementary's art teacher. She makes our school a community through her art, projects, smiles, and determination to make everyone feel included. She adapts her projects to fit the needs of all students, and it's truly amazing. She is also a huge supporter of students who need that little extra bit of love and compassion by providing one-to-one interactions throughout her day. She provides that extra opportunity for students to initiate, process, and develop their own ideas and have fun. She is always coming up with fresh and fun ideas to engage students. Her enthusiasm, energy, and dedication to students is remarkable. In addition, Kate generously contributes both her time and energy outside of regular school hours as well. Some of these ways are evident in the after-school student groups she started, such as Art Club and Film Club. Kate helps make the school beautiful and creates a welcoming atmosphere for the students. After her first year of teaching, she worked with our PTA and created an all-school art installment in our cafeteria. Her beautiful graphic design can be seen in our PBIS posters in every classroom and hallway. Unity Day projects and Family Fun Night photo ops. The list goes on and on. At the heart of her work is a passion for connecting students to their creativity and to each other. It is Kimberly Lane Elementary's great honor to recognize Kate as our May 2020 Employee of the Month. Kate, congratulations. And at this time, you can feel free to make a few comments.
Thank you. I just want to start by saying I'm beyond humbled to be nominated as the employee of the month. And I wanted to start by saying a huge thank you to Dr. Corey Wareman for giving me the opportunity to teach art at a school that I just love. Dr. Wareman is such a strong leader and role model who shows up every day for her staff and students, especially during this time of e-learning. I have felt like I can keep trying new things and grow as a teacher, and she will support me even with my over-the-top ideas that get a little crazy. Little did she know, when she hired me, she really hired the whole family as quote-unquote "the Hammerow crew." I would not be the person I am without them, and I couldn't get half of what I do done without them and the many volunteers that helped me along the way. I also want to thank the entire Kimberly Lane staff for making the workplace somewhere I'm so excited to be every day. The staff has become a second family to me, and I'm so appreciative of all of them and have been missing them so much as we are apart. I couldn't do anything I do without the community at Kimberly Lane, and I believe that we've gotten stronger as the time we've been apart even. Also, being an art teacher, I get to work with an amazing group of art educators throughout the district who inspire me every day, and I'm truly thankful for all of them. But most importantly, I want to thank all my students that I get to work with. I truly love being able to teach all of them art. They make my job exciting, challenging for sure, and oh, so much fun. I know I speak for many people when I say we dearly miss all of the students right now and are excited for the day we get to come back together. I get to do what I love every day, and it makes it so much fun to go to work with such wonderful staff and students. I'm so thankful for the school board for letting us be a part of this district and working with us. But I'm also so proud to be one small, tiny part of the Wayzetta Public School District. I really appreciate this word, especially since there's so many other wonderful teachers that deserve the recognition of their work, especially during this time. And I'm honored to work alongside such an amazing group of people. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you, Kate. And congratulations to you and also Nate. We appreciate your work so much. Kate, I think that we will have a framed certificate for you at some point. We'll be sure to get that to you. Thanks so much for being with us tonight. Great. Next on our agenda, we have reports from organizations. I will turn it back over to Dr. Anderson. First on the agenda is the Wayzetta Youth Hockey Association donation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, Kate and Nate, congratulations on your recognitions tonight. Thanks so much for your great work. We really appreciate it. And I want to compliment you on your large cheering contingency of family members and colleagues that are here tonight. So I thank all of you for showing up tonight at our board meeting. This is probably a record for our best-attended Zoom board meeting so far. Of course, it's only our second one, but you're at least for tonight, part of a record setter. So thank you for joining with us tonight. Our next report, kind of a recognition and also a show of appreciation, goes out to our Wayzetta Youth Hockey Association. And they're again very kindly making a donation to the school district. I'd like to share a couple of thoughts here and then give Sloan Walgren and Greg Gibson an opportunity to make a few comments if they'd like. Greg shared with us earlier he worked really hard to get his audio set up on his computer. So we want to make sure we give him that opportunity tonight to try it out on live Zoom. But I'd like to first share the following. The Wayzetta Youth Hockey Association approached Community Education Facility Manager Sloan Walgren with the desire to purchase equipment and make upgrades to the ICE Arena at Central Middle School. The new equipment and upgrades included new lockers in the Junior Gold locker room, a new whiteboard, a new door for the coach's office, a new drinking fountain, and a new TV for the lobby. All of these items have been installed in the ICE Arena. The total cost of the new equipment and installation was $10,926. We are incredibly grateful to the Wayzetta Youth Hockey Association for their generous donation to improve the facility and for everything that they do for the youth and the families in our community. Board members from the Wayzetta Youth Hockey Association are in attendance tonight. Greg, you may have some colleagues, although I'm not sure if we do, scanning my computer screen here. But if there are, they can certainly join in on the fun and share a few thoughts if they wish. But we thank you for being here with us tonight and presenting the Wayzetta School Board with a donation in the amount of $10,926. So at this time, I'll invite Sloan and/or Greg to make a few comments if you would please.
Certainly, thank you. This is great gift. Immediate past president of Wayzetta Youth Hockey. Kind of weird, in 18 years is the first time I've not been able to present a check and shake people's hands. So hopefully, the male person brings the check over to Sloan. But as always, I want to thank the school board and the district for the nearly 50-year relationship we've had at Central Middle School Arena. It's a key to success for kids who play hockey in District 284. We had a near-record enrollment of almost 1,200 players this year. It's an all-time high. So without Wayzetta Central Middle School, kids would not be able to get to play hockey. So thank you. We're also working with Sloan and his staff on a four- or five-year plan of what improvements we can make on the arena to keep it state-of-the-art and have it last another 50 years. So once again, thank you for everything that you all do. And I can't wait next year to present a check in person versus Zoom in a mailman. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I just want to take the opportunity to thank Greg for everything that him and his board members do for the youth and families in our community. They run a great program, one of the largest youth associations in the country. And I just want to thank him for all this hard work that he do.
Great. Thank you, Sloan, and thank you, Mr. Gibson. Thank you to the Wayzetta Youth Hockey Association. We're grateful for this long-time, 50-year positive and collaborative partnership. We really appreciate your generosity.
Thank you, Greg. We appreciate it. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, we get to hear from the Wayzetta Education Fund about the grants. Chase, do you have any comments? Or will we just be starting the video?
I'll make a couple of introductory comments. The Wayzetta Education Fund works year-round to secure funds for our grant program. We have a number of teachers annually that apply for grants to enrich their classroom. And tonight, Liz Brown is with us as a representative of the Wayzetta Education Fund. And it's my understanding we have the video to queue up here in a little bit. But I just want to say thank you to Liz, first of all, for being here tonight, for your great leadership with the Ed Fund Board, and to all of the Ed Fund Board members who give so freely of their time to raise funds, review applications for grants, and then to distribute and award those grants. Our primary fundraiser is our annual Drive for Excellence Golf Event, which I think is scheduled for September 23rd. And we're looking forward to normal times returning and being able to enjoy that golf event coming up here in a few months. And we appreciate everybody's fine efforts to help make that happen. So I think we're going to relatively quickly move toward a brief video that will highlight the grants that have been awarded. But first, I don't know if Liz had anything that she wanted to share or if you just want to move right to the video. I wanted to give you the opportunity now that you're promptly on the screen and ready to present if you wish.
Thank you. Hi, this is Liz Brown with the Wayzetta Education Fund. We're so sad that we couldn't surprise our wonderful teachers and staff this year, which is just one of the best things that we do and why we do what we do. So instead, we just created a short video that captures all of the 12 grants and winners that we have this year, and we hope you enjoy it.
Hi, I'm Becky Hayden, and I'm with the Wayzetta Education Fund. The Wayzetta Education Fund was started in 2003 with the sole purpose of supporting innovative teaching and learning in Wayzetta. We have awarded over $325,000 in grants. And this year, we are excited to award 12 teachers over $40,000 for the 2020-2021 school year. Congratulations to the following award winners.
Congratulations to Ginny Adams on her grant to provide books to all the Greenwood Elementary students to help prevent the summer slide.
Congratulations to Allison Westlake on her grant for iPads that will assist special education students at Gleason Lake Elementary.
Congratulations to Lisa Carlson for her grant of three 3D printers to teach coding and 3D design to students at Northwoods Elementary.
Congratulations to Karina Kramer on her grant for Google Expedition goggles for use at Northwoods and Sunset Hill Elementary School.
Congratulations to Mike Brandisi on his grant to provide polar optical heart rate sensors to the physical education curriculum at West Middle School.
Congratulations to Lindsay Nyhoff on her grant for a coffee cart to be staffed by students in special education at West Middle School.
Congratulations to Steve Newman and Robin Crast on their grant of CoSpace's 3D augmented and virtual reality classroom tools for Central Middle School.
Congratulations to Emma Carroll on her grant for a colored decal printing machine for the graphic design and ceramics classes at Wayzetta High School.
Congratulations to Ken Pashina for his grant of a 3D printer to be used in their manufacturing and robotics classes at Wayzetta High School.
Congratulations to Kyle Swanson on his grant of a precise digital measuring system for the wood manufacturing class at Wayzetta High School.
Congratulations to Renee Highland and Nicole Delorme on their grant of therapy lamps for use in the social management autism program at Wayzetta High School.
Congratulations to Alyssa Warren and Monica Vlock for their grant for a Spanish mobile library at Wayzetta High School.
Very fun video. Thank you. I also want to thank the Wayzetta Education Fund for their leadership, Adam Hanneman, the Chair, Julie Wexler, the co-chair, Liz Brown, the Treasurer. So nice to have you with us tonight. Rebecca Hayden, the Secretary. As Chase mentioned, the Wayzetta Ed Fund Board members are volunteers who put in a great deal of time and work into providing grants for innovative instructional ideas across the entire district. They encourage teachers to imagine new ways to engage students, which I think is now more important than ever. Thank you also to our generous community who donate all the money that is used to make the Wayzetta Ed Fund grants a reality. And finally, congratulations to our well-deserving grant recipients. We are excited to see your innovative ideas in action. Do any board members have any other comments? Questions for Liz?
Linda Cohen, thank you so much, Liz, and everybody who's a member of the Ed Fund. I'm curious, how many applicants did you have to narrow down to the 12 winners?
We get around 30 applicants every year, I would say. And then we have two rounds that we go through. We have an initial short application. Sometimes those we eliminate right away because they don't fit within our guidelines, and there's something that the district can provide. And then we ask the remaining four to fill out a longer form with more detail. And then we usually get down to between 10 and 15 recipients every year. But we would encourage more applications. We're always interested in what the teachers and staff can bake up and would love to continue to give away those dollars. So bring them next year, bring them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda.
Can I just add, I think the Ed Fund awarded close to $40,000 this year, if I remember correctly.
We're actually at $46,000 this year.
$46,000.
Yeah.
And yeah, it's been really impressive. That's kind of the range, has been $35,000 to $45,000 per year. So it's been really a great opportunity for our staff and a wonderful gift to the school district to have such committed individuals and to receive those monies to do special projects. So thanks again, Liz, for your leadership. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Great. Thanks, Liz. All right. Next on our agenda, we have the audience opportunity to address the school board. And this section of the agenda provides an opportunity for community members to provide input to the school board. Citizens who wish to speak on a particular subject are asked to email their statement to Ashley Winter, our executive assistant to the superintendent. And we ask those statements be emailed to Ashley by noon on the Monday of our regular meetings. The board chair will then read the statement during this section of the regular board meeting. However, we do not have any requests to address the board this evening. So next on our agenda, we have student curriculum presentations, of which we have none this evening. And after that, we have administrative reports and recommendations. Under Finance and Business Services, we have two items this evening. So I will hand it over to Mr. Westrom.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, as our Chair indicated, we have two items. First is our monthly financial reports. And I just wanted to make a few remarks that the monthly financial reports are included for your review and include an investment summary, an analysis of our financial reports as of March 2020, a statement of revenues, and a statement of expenditures. And I did want to make just a couple remarks real quick. Through March 31st of 2020, you can tell that our budget and our actual revenues and our actual expenditures are coming in as planned, as if we weren't experiencing a pandemic. So tomorrow, I will be meeting with the Treasurer, Sarah Johansson, and the Finance Committee to talk a little bit about what we're experiencing since March 31st. So as you're aware, since we went to a distance learning model, we are not receiving fee revenue. And any of those revenues that we would normally receive based on participation have been refunded back to the people who are not able to enjoy the experience that they intended to receive. So I think our financial reports are going to look a little bit different over the next three months. However, once again, the district has always been financially positioned quite well. And I know that your Treasurer will be giving you an update about some of the work that we've been doing with our citizens Finance Advisory Council, as well as others, to make sure that the district continues to be positioned while during the pandemic. So a couple of things, just the statement of revenues and the statement of expenditures are recorded on the cash basis. So once again, that's one of the reasons why you're not noticing anything unusual, even though we did go into the distance learning model in the middle of March. And then another thing just to note is we haven't performed physical inventories. So at one point, we did, as of March, we did have a lot of dry goods and a lot of food items in our freezers. So once we do those physical inventories, we'll see some changes in our financial reports as well. But at this point, I think the district board can move ahead with a high level of confidence that the finance team, as well as Chase or the superintendent's entire administrative team is paying particularly close attention to the finances of the district. So with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Westrom. Are there any questions or comments from board members? All right, seeing none. That was just an information item, correct?
That is correct. So the first item was just for your information. You're going to laugh. Of course, I just got logged out. I'm on my computer and my iPad at the same time.
Mr. Westrom, I'd be happy Mr. Westrom, I'd be happy to read the comments if you'd like.
Yes, would you mind reading the comments? Thank you. I'll log in.
The next item on our agenda is the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Revenue Plan for Fiscal Year 2022 through 2031 for Intermediate District 287. A little background on the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Revenue. The 2015 Legislative Session established the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Revenue Program for school districts. And this program replaces the Health and Safety Revenue, Deferred Maintenance Revenue, and Alternative Facilities Bonding and Levy Programs, beginning in Fiscal Year 2017. Annually, Intermediate District 287 must have a 10-year capital plan adopted by its board and each member district's individual school board. District 287 approves the levy a year in advance to accommodate several of its member districts who levy a year in advance. So the recommended action is to approve District 287's Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Capital Expenditure Plan for Fiscal Years 2022 through 2031, and affirm WISATA Public Schools Fiscal Year 2021 through 2022 portion of that plan. Could I please get a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, Cheryl Polzin moves the motion and asks that we waive the reading of the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Polzin. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, Linda Cohen has seconded the motion.
All right, thank you. I'll go through the list for discussion. Any discussion from Linda Cohen?
No.
Cian Falconer?
No.
Sarah Johansson?
No.
Chris McCullough?
Just one question, if I could, Mr. Westrom. Is the percentage that we contribute to 287, is it based on our utilization of 287 resources? Or is it a different type of formula?
Madam Chair, members of the board, yes, actually, it's based upon our utilization. So I think it's based upon the number of ABMs or people units that are served in 287 programs.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion from Cheryl Polzin?
Not at this time, thank you.
Bonita Lucky?
No.
All right. As your representative on the 287 School Board, I want to thank you all for your approval of this item. Hearing no other discussion, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Cian Falconer?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky? Yes. Cheryl Polzin?
Yes.
Andrea King?
Yes. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have Human Resource Services. Resolution Regarding Termination and Non-Renewal of Teaching Contracts. I will turn it over to Ms. Voss.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you for this time, your time this evening. I'm here to share with you the Resolution Regarding Termination and Non-Renewal of Teaching Contracts. This is an annual process that we follow. The administration recommends the adoption of the attached resolution for the non-renewal of the teaching contracts of the following probationary teachers, of which you have in your packet to review.
All right, the recommended action is to adopt the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of the name probationary teachers. Could I please get a motion for approval?
Madam Chair, this is Sarah Johansson, and I move the recommended action and ask that we waive the reading of the resolution.
Is there a second?
This is Bonita Lucky. A second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion from Linda Cohen?
No discussion, thanks.
Thanks, Linda. Cian Falconer?
No discussion.
Sarah Johansson?
No, thank you.
Chris McCullough?
No.
Cheryl Polzin?
No, thank you.
Bonita Lucky?
No.
All right, hearing no discussion, could the clerk please call the roll?
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky? Yes. Cheryl Polzin?
Yes.
Cian Falconer?
Yes.
Andrea King?
Yes. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, we have Board Reports. And this section of the agenda provides an opportunity for board members to update other school board members on school board-related work, or to make announcements of interest to the public. Tonight, we will be hearing from our School Board Treasurer, Sarah Johansson.
Hello, thank you, Madam Chair, and hello to my board colleagues and administrators. It's exciting to be able to share a bit of the work that we're doing, that we're doing on the committees that I serve on in this unprecedented times. I feel like my committees are working fast and furious, and then together and working fast and furious apart. So I thought I would give a bit of an update on the committees that I serve. And I will start, of course, with Finance, as Mr. Westrom said. The Finance Committee continues to meet on a monthly basis. We also have been meeting with our CFAC, which is the Citizens Finance Advisory Council, and even had an impromptu meeting with our OPEB Trust Team, which includes members of the CFAC, as well as administrators, and our PFM, our Financial Advisor. Just to make sure that everyone's on the same page with the changing state of the nation and the markets, and doing our best to be as well-versed and as understanding of the conditions as we possibly can. So I would like to thank our CFAC for continuing to provide fantastic guidance. It was wonderful to have a Zoom meeting with them, as I think I wrote in my board reports. We have some CFAC members who maybe are snowbirds, and they were able to join us. And we really valued their comments and in the conversation. So a few things, board colleagues, you may know some of these things because they were in my notes and minutes from the meeting, but I will share them for the sake of the community as well. Our district financial operations are continuing. Most can be done remotely. I know the finance team is working to vary and do some social distancing when they need to go into the office to check checks and other things. But they really are making a strong effort to pay of mind to the internal control and the safety of the number of documents that come through the district. Second, the district has currently retained all employees and has reached a contract with the transportation, has reached an agreement with our transportation contract to retain our bus drivers as well. We have implemented a soft hiring freeze, meaning that there is no hiring being done except for essential employees that we know will have student contact next year, such as the principals that we needed to fill some vacancies. Our construction is also continuing, and that is following the latest workplace guidelines as issued by Public Health and the CDC. Additionally, as everyone's aware, our Culinary Express staff are working to provide breakfasts and lunches for students. We are now providing meals for students seven days a week, distributed at four sites. And at this, to date today, and Mr. Westrom or Dr. Anderson might change, might check me on this, but I think we've served over 100,000 meals to our, to students in our community. Additionally, our Culinary Express, not our, our childcare, some of our home-based pairs, et cetera, are working to provide emergency childcare at Greenwood for the children of Tier One Emergency, or Emergency Childcare, but childcare for the children of Tier One workers. It might also be interesting to know, some of us were on the call with the Commissioner Ricker, the Commissioner of Education Ricker this afternoon, and she gave an update that as of today, in the state of Minnesota, we have served over 12 million meals to students across the state of Minnesota, and that there have been about 6,000 children served in childcare, which then, of course, allows for their parents to continue to work in the hospitals and research centers and things that they need to do, and on the front lines. So that is certainly something to be proud of in this moment. Cash flow monitoring is another big one. As the community is aware, the district receives funds from a number of sources, and one of those continues to be the collection of property taxes. And property taxes were set to be due at the end of this week, on May 15th. However, there has been a delay in that collection, and so citizens are excused from paying them until as late as July 15th. Although that may give relief to the property payers, that may, we need to watch it closely because the district does rely on the payments from those property taxes for our cash flow. And that was one of the topics that we talked about with the CFAC, and just looking at some long-term, or some short-term things that we could do to ensure we have the resources to provide what we need to do. Additionally, as I said, our OPEB has been, worked with our financial advisors to monitor the economic instability as it relates to our investments for the OPEB Trust. And we fortunate, our past prudent fiscal management of this trust and really of our cash flow and cash balance, et cetera, will, it has really positioned us well through this period of instability. Increases in savings, I think Mr. Westrom has detailed for us all, but we can repeat again, the move to distance learning has added additional expenses, as well as some cost savings. I think I forgot to mention, the food that we are serving is covered by the summer, the summer food service program. And so we are fortunate to have that reimbursement to buy the food and keep those staff on. Other savings, of course, are with gas and utilities and the number of things that the ability to kind of shut buildings down and not be providing some of those day-to-day services, garbage, trash collection. However, you know, there's also been a number of losses additionally, as Mr. Westrom said, with fees, with community ed and sports and other things. The district has implemented soft freezes in purchasing and supplies and hiring, as I mentioned. And again, the Finance Department is working super hard to ensure that we are where we need to be and monitor the forecast. Finally, this is the time of year when the finance office is preparing to close the 1920 books and open up the 2021 books, and there's lots of question marks and instability that. I think we're closely monitoring the budget forecasts and doing and projecting as if our school operations will return to a more closer-looking to normal in the fall. But everyone's aware that that's all to be determined, that no one knows that. Although the US and state forecasts are increasingly dismal, the word from the Finance Department and all the work that they're doing is that we're confident that our strong financial footing going into this pandemic, combined with prudent fiscal management and really kind of Hawkeye watching of what's happening, will be an asset for us as we move forward. So that is my financial report, some other super quick ones. I also serviced Chair of the Policy Committee. And before the pandemic, we were working on the 600s. Dr. Johnson was leading the charge and reviewing some of our educational services policies. We've taken a couple months' break with the Policy Committee, but are looking at how we can resume that work again, certainly after our administrators are maybe on a little bit more solid footing with all of the work that they're doing to implement and the distance learning and close up the year. When I thought that this board report was coming my way for the month of May, I was super excited to report on the status of our newly-formed Health and Well-being Ad-Hoc Committee. And I'm still really excited to report on our Health and Well-being Ad-Hoc Committee. There's no time like now where the health and well-being of our students in our community is not at the absolute forefront. That said, our administrators are working diligently every moment, probably almost 24 hours a day, ensuring that work. The committee is made up of, by the way, I should say, in addition to a couple board members, we have representation from teaching and learning, and from special services, and from culinary, and finance, and human resources, health services, special ed, community education. So it's a really cross-section group of the district. Before the COVID-19 pandemic, we started a pretty comprehensive review and edit of our wellness, of our district wellness policy, and that is in progress. We began discussions of a citizen's request for us to look at animal-assisted support and therapy dogs. And so that conversation started, as well as setting some goals and really looking at a comprehensive view of the strategic and visionary portion as it relates to our roadmap of our health and well-being initiatives across the district. This committee, too, is super active, although not meeting as a committee at this moment, but allowing our administrators to do our work. And we have high hopes that we will convene again when things slow down and return to a bit of normalcy. Finally, 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 board colleagues, I know we're participating in the Step to It Challenge, and I was doing lots of social distance walking and running on the treadmill, but I forgot to enter my minutes. And so we might not have looked as strong, not that I have that many to offer, but I promise you, I'm up to date in my recording. So thanks to the district for organizing some wellness activities for the board. So with that, lots of conversation. I am willing to entertain any questions, or...
Great, thank you, Sarah. Does anyone have any questions for Sarah? All right, thanks for all that great information. Well, that concludes our regular board meeting for May 11th, 2020. Could I please get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move, this is Chris.
Second, this is Sarah.
Thank you. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky? Yes. Cheryl Polzin?
Yes.
Cian Falconer?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Andrea King?
Yes, the motion carries. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.